Good evening, welcome to tonight's Town Council meeting. Tonight, Monday, August 8, 2007. Agenda item number one, Pledge Allegiance. Please join me.
(inaudible)
Agenda item number two, roll call, please.
Councillor O'Clair.
Present.
Councillor Carrasco.
Present.
Councillor Clements.
Present.
Councillor DePietro. Councillor Estrada.
Excused.
Councillor McKenzie.
Here.
Councillor Miana.
Present.
Councillor Steves.
Present.
Councillor Vecchia.
Excused.
Six present, two excused, one on his way.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, considering except Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, July 25, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Simple handful, all those in favor? Thank you, six-zero, motion carries. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports, A, General Government, Councillor Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the General Government Subcommittee was held Tuesday, July 26, 7:00 PM, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Councillor Steves, Councillor Estrada, and Rick Nash. Also in attendance were Councillor Manna, Director of Inspection Services, Pelletier, Town Manager San Angelo, and Citizens David Smick and George Chenier. We called the meeting at 7:00 PM. The first agenda item was to review the recommendation of Richard Nash as a Citizens Member to the General Government Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2017, and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council for ratification. Motion was made by Councillor Steves, seconded by Councillor Estrada. Discussion was held involving Mr. Nash's history serving as a Citizens Member in General Government in other areas. Vote was taken, three in favor, Mr. Nash abstained, passed to submit to council. Agenda item number two, review the recommendation of L. David Covino of Fistale as Constable for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2019, and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council for ratification. A motion by Mr. Nash, en seconded by Councillor Estrada. Discussion regarding Constables duties and requirements ensued. Vote taken, all in favor, four-zero. Motion passed to submit to council. Agenda item number three, review, discuss a bylaw to manage and control blighted properties in Southbridge, and entertain a motion to submit to council for ratification. A lengthy discussion began regarding a number of concerns raised over the past few weeks, mainly regarding the definitions of blight and vacancy, and whether the bylaw was overreaching and enforceable. Director Pelletier had done an extensive review of the concerns raised prior to the meeting, and provided a revised diversion within the existing one for discussion. The definition of blight was modified slightly, and the definition of vacant was redefined so as not to include properties that are being well-maintained, not blighted, but are not occupied for other reasons. Example, owners are away for months at a time, or on a long-term renovation project. Director Pelletier explained the registration process and its necessity for safety issues, and the ultimate goal of preventing further blighted properties in town. The new definitions and enforcement will not put the burden on those who try to maintain their property. The new "vagant" definition was a welcome improvement to all present. Registration provides the information for us to contact the responsible party should there be a problem. Currently tracking down parties is quite time-consuming, which costs money to the taxpayers. The registration fee will be used to offset the cost of notification and other means of enforcement so as not to burden those in compliance. Yearly registration notifications will be done by mass mailings, and properties can be leaned for non-compliance. There is an appeals process through the Board of Health to address any concerns or issues that arise. The fines and compliance deadlines were discussed, condemned properties and demolition processes were touched on, and the costs associated. The ultimate goal is to keep properties from becoming abandoned and falling into a blighted and condemned state. Mr. Nash pointed out some inconsistencies with the language within the bylaw, and changes were agreed upon and made in regard to his suggestions. Mr. Smick questioned charter compliance in regard to other bylaws this new bylaw may be inconsistent with. Director Pelletier will review the entire document and present his findings prior to council reading. I entertained a motion to recommend the revised bylaw to manage and control blight properties in the town of Southbridge to council for ratification, with the understanding that Director Pelletier will provide a memo addressing documentation of inconsistency within the existing bylaws. A motion was made by Mr. Nash, seconded by Councillor Steves. All were in favor, four-zero. The motion passed to submit to council. There was a motion to adjourn, and so we adjourned the meeting at 8:50. Respectfully submitted, myself, General Government Subcommittee Chair. A number of things came out of this meeting. First, I want to thank the Director Pelletier for being able to put this information together for us prior, so that it was a much, much more workable session. It was really great input from those who attended, and I think we came up with a great document, which was then forwarded to council members almost immediately after that meeting, so that they had even a longer time, with the exception of rather than waiting till a Thursday before the meeting to try to understand everything. We made sure the document got to the councillors, they could ask questions in the interim, and this evening, we are prepared to come back and begin the three-reading process. It was noted that, you know, we've questioned that three-reading process, and whether or not we need to actually do three readings again, and it was discussed that since we had said we would do it that way, and give the community a complete chance to look at this bylaw, and come to these meetings and discuss it again if they need to, that it would be read three times, hopefully with no further amendments. Again, I want to thank those who came and did the work, because it was a very healthy and working meeting. We do have a meeting scheduled for the 15th, in regard to, shoot, what's that process? Rosemary's? Do you remember the, I can't remember the agenda topic. There's one item right now on the agenda.
Master Plan?
Nope, it's on the stash, no, the projection chute. Oh, it just came to me, and I can't think of it at this moment. I apologize for that. I think we have it actually, do we have it right here? Let's see, if somebody can point that out, that would be great. If not, no.
Uh-uh.
I know we have a new agenda for it. Anyway, it's the 15th, 7 o'clock, in the Rice Conference Room, I believe, here at the Town Hall.
What's the economic development plan?
Uh, here it is. Nope, she hasn't put the item on there, but I know we have it listed. Okay. It is 7:00 PM, August 15th. Thanks.
What's the economic development plan?
No, it's not. It's a specific, we're having a presentation for a gentleman that, it's part of that. Oh, you know, it's in the, I'll find it, and I will tell you before the end of the meeting. Thank you. I lost it.
Moving on to Agenda Item 4B, Department of Public Works, Councillor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not have any minutes to read, and I do not have any meeting scheduled. Although you will see a Subcommittee appointment on here for DPW, I asked Yvonne to put it on the agenda to bypass the Subcommittee, because there was one Subcommittee member on vacation. We would not have had a quorum, and we wanted to get this to the council right away, as it's a Citizens appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. For C, Education and Human Services, Councillor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no meeting, I have no meeting minutes at the moment, and I have no meeting scheduled. I actually talked to Yvonne, and we did have two people apply for Citizen Members, but they're also applying to be on the School Committee, so I decided to hold off and wait till what happened, to see what happens with the School Committee vote.
Thank you. Agenda item number four D, Planning Development, Councillor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no meeting minutes, and nothing's scheduled at this time. I believe I'm still waiting, or still looking for one more Citizen Member. If anybody is interested, please get an application in. Thank you.
Thank you. For E, Protection of Person and Property, that's Councillor Vecchia, and he's not here tonight, but there is no meeting scheduled, and nothing to report. The only thing he did ask was if there are citizens interested in serving as Citizen Members, to please submit to the Town Manager's Office for that process. Moving on, I'll-
That's Stretch Code.
Yes, let me go back to 4A, General Government, and turn it back over to Councillor Clements.
Sorry, I found it. We're discussing the Stretch Code, and it's, there's a state expert doing a presentation for us at the General Government Subcommittee meeting. So, that's it, from the Economic Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McKenzie.
It, will there be, on our, either on our website, or on the screen, the cable access, will there be an indication as to what openings are available for people to participate on Subcommittees?
There is a current listing in regards to vacancies, in regards across the board, whether it be Subcommittees and Commissions, but, you know, we will, I will ask just to make sure that it's posted, and maybe we can get it with the cable access as on a scroll also.
Yeah, that would be good, because not everybody comes here.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Announcements. I have a few this evening. Number one, this Saturday is our 200th fireworks display. It is scheduled for 4:30. The gates open, there's a lot of different activities for the families and children. The fireworks will probably kick off around 9-ish. I've been, I've been told that it's going to be a show to remember, so it's a great time for our community. Just be watching our cable access, be watching our, the Town Facebook page, and I'm going to actually request that our Town Manager, if our fireworks display is to be canceled due to the expected thunderstorms, that we use our phone system and call as many residents as possible, and just let them know that we're going to go forward with our rain date, because I would like that our citizens be made known, not everybody's on social media, so, but the rain date is for Sunday, same time, same place. So, if by chance we do get hit with rain, and we have to cancel, we will try to get on Sunday, the 14th.
I'm sorry to keep interrupting. You didn't mention exactly where, I'm thinking in the airport?
Yes, Southbridge Municipal Airport. Yep.
And I just wanted to add also that, for a couple of hours before the fireworks actually go off, the Island Castaways are going to be taking the stage and playing some Caribbean, you know, Caribbean-type rock, and so it ought to be fun.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned that from 4:30, there's going to be different activities going on at the airport, so people can get there early and enjoy the day.
I just have a question, and perhaps Committee Member Steves can answer this. Do you know, because we haven't had a presentation in terms of traffic pattern, are, how they, having a one-way up one area, and a one-way down the other, or do we know if there's any restriction?
Actually, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a shame.
We should know that, that's-
You know, whether or not it's a one-way up Clements Hill, for instance, and then traffic exiting down Pleasant, perhaps, or, I'm just curious if there's-
I think the idea is to try to direct traffic down Commercial Drive, but-
Oh, that too, right, they could, which-
That's a far better road for the traffic.
Which would still make me wonder if they'd do a one-way on Clements Hill then, or something.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay, just curious, so people would have an idea as to which direction they should go.
The Rotary is primarily behind, is doing most of the organization for this, so, we're just kind of helping staff it.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great question, and seeing that it's going to have to deal with our traffic and our public safety, I'm going to ask our Town Manager to ask our Police Chief what the plan is in regards to, you know, the route, and if we can, if we can get-
Get that on.
Get that also on, just if they have, because I know during the parade route, they had a map, which was very helpful and very detailed in regards to pickups and shuttle buses, if we can get something similar. If, I know we're running short on time, but the quicker we can get it up there, the better it'll be in citizens.
Even a memo that just clearly says which roads-
I know the Chief of Police has already made those decisions, because we did talk about it, but he didn't tell me how the routes were going, but we did talk about that, so, again, I will post it on the Town Hall Facebook page, we'll try to get it out to the cable access people as quickly as possible to put out that information. We could probably put it on the police website as well.
Thank you. My second announcement tonight is, Councillor Steves mentioned the School Committee vacancy. The last day to submit is Wednesday, August 17, at 3:00 PM. There will be no electronic submissions allowed, accepted. At that point, on Monday, September 12, we will have a joint School Committee-Town Council meeting to discuss those applicants, and make a selection that day. So, if you are a citizen, interested in helping fill the School Committee vacancy, please fill out that application, and that information will be given to all the councillors as it comes in. Councillor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question, due to the receivership and the Committee not being allowed to vote, will they be allowed to vote for the person being appointed? Because that's not a business of the Southbridge School District?
Yes, because we have to still fulfill the Charter responsibilities, and there's still a governing board, so, because it's not a direct decision that affects-
Okay, I just want to be clear on that.
Yes, so they will be allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. My next, that one, the next announcement is for our, my councillors in the public. Our one, the one-year anniversary for our Town Manager is coming up on August 19. He has been here a year, and we need to do an evaluation on the goals and objectives that were voted on last term. I know we have two new councillors, that, I hope that you are familiar with those goals and objectives, because strictly we are going to evaluate our manager on those goals and objectives. And therefore, moving forward, my goal is to have a council of the whole meeting in September, to strictly discuss before our second meeting in September, so I want to do it fairly quickly, to discuss the goals and objectives moving forward, on how we're going to do this, and I want to hear your opinions and your thoughts and your process, how we can make this process go quickly. I do have a form that I have developed, basically, that it just states the goals and objectives, and you would then just, pass that down, write your comments, and it's, each goal and objective is on this form, and then at the end, there's each individual councillor's comments on how they feel the Town Manager has done in his year. To review, we would review these goals and objectives, our second meeting, I would come, I would hope that you guys would turn them in prior, so then I can present to the public the councillor's response, in the second meeting coming up in August. And then the first, in the first couple of weeks in September, we're going to redo new goals and objectives moving forward for this fiscal year. Any confusion? Councillor O'Clair.
I'm sorry, thank you. In between the council of the whole meeting and the council meeting in September, or you want these turned in to you before the council?
These, these that I would like for the next week and a half, that you guys are able to do this, so we can review them and discuss them on our next August meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you send me these in electronic format, so I can type them out? If that would be okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor, Mr. Town Manager.
Obviously, I knew that this was coming up, because we've discussed this, and knowing the date, it's coming up on August 19, I've prepared a response to each of those goals and objectives, with an explanation of the things that have happened revolving around that particular goal and objective. So, tonight after the meeting, I will electronically send you that as well, okay? So you can look at it, you can have some basis, because I mean, some of the things you know about, some of the things you don't know about, so I need to provide you the information as to, you know, how far along we are in particular goals and objectives, okay?
Councillor Clements.
I believe we had a, with Mr. Clark, and I'm not sure if we did it with Mr. Pecos, because he was the interim, but I know with Mr. Clark, we had a bit of a different evaluation form, too, overall management-type performance, too. Did we-
I have not seen that form. I wasn't here during Councillor, excuse me, Town Manager Clark's tenure, so therefore, I have developed this, and if I can ask the office if they have it, I didn't know, but I, again, it's just, I just want to make sure that we are evaluating the manager, because based on the contract that we signed with him was based on goals and objectives. So I just don't want to go off the spectrum. I think if we want to make tweaks this upcoming year, I think this is, the next couple of weeks is the time where those tweaks will be made, and if we have to develop a better evaluation form, or that goes more conducive, then we can do that. Councillor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I do recall what Councillor Clements is talking about for Mr. Clark's goals and objectives, because if you remember correctly, we were in the middle of his goals and objectives on our first year, when we were both, we were both elected in 2013, and that's when he resigned.
But she's asking about an evaluation of form. I've never seen the form, I've seen goals and objectives.
I've seen the form, but however, if you could please reissue the goals and objectives that we talked about before the new councillors were elected, and just so they have had that in front of them.
Yes.
What was voted on last year. It would be nice for the newly elected-
They're here, they're all broken down.
Right, but if you could send them the original, so they know.
Okay, absolutely.
I mean, that would be, I mean, so they can compare, and just to make sure, I mean, that's only fair, I think.
No, absolutely, no problem.
Okay, I've got some information too. And I just have one request. I know this is going to be done in September, and I'm just going to put it out there right now. I start my night classes in September, so, the only night I wouldn't be able to make, and I'm putting this out there as public record, so everybody can hear, is Wednesday night. That's the only night I'm not available.
The new goals and objectives would be done in September, then all this, these we want to get done in August.
Okay.
All right, no problem. Any further questions? Councillor Clements.
Just a comment, I've got some information for us, that, before it hits the airwaves. So Clements Hill will be closed from Page Hill all the way to the airport for emergency vehicles only. Two lanes of travel only right after the show until we empty out. Two lanes same direction towards Pleasant Street, no parking at all on Pleasant Street from the Airport Access Road all the way to Barefoot Road. All will be strictly enforced and posted by the Police Department. Let's see, Clements closed 4:00 PM until, so, yeah, the road will be closed 4:00 PM until, question mark, Clements Hill Road, obviously depends on the traffic coming out. So, that's what I have so far as a quick answer.
Thank you. That is it for my announcements. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, Town Manager's Announcements, Mr. San Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to first talk about a new program that the Town is going to be creating and work in conjunction with our Police Department. I don't know how many people on the board are familiar with the Explorers Program, but the Explorers Program is a program that educates children in our community about the Police Department. And basically, what they would do is that children between the ages of 14 and, say, 21, would meet bi-weekly with a member of our Police Department, and that particular member would be our Resource Officer at the school system. And it'd be teaching them about all the different kinds of things that our Police Department does. The goal here is to do two things, is one, to help create a positive environment for our children in town, but also to, for those students, for those children that want to be interested in the Police Department, or looking at a career path in law enforcement, it's a great program. It's actually already in Charlton, there's one of the communities that are doing that, and I know our police officers were meeting with Charlton today to talk more about it. There's a lot of excitement about this particular program, and it's kind of laughing, because the Chairman had talked about this with other some members, I guess some people prior to tonight's meeting, so, it's really positive that this is going to move forward. And frankly, what it does is, it gives us another way to fill open police officer positions. So, this is sort of, we have an auxiliary, as you know, in town, so this would be the step before auxiliary, they would come in the Explorer Program, and then move into auxiliary, and then potentially, they would have a shot at coming into our Police Department as an officer. And our Chief and Deputy Chief and Officers would already be familiar with those candidates. So frankly, what we do is, we steal the very best of the program. So I think it's a really positive thing, I think it's something that you'll see a lot of interest with our children in the community. I don't have the formal dates as to when we're going to do it yet. Obviously, we're going to wait till the school system opens, so that we can message through the school system as well about this program. We'll put it on the Police Department's website, we'll do a press release, so we'll do a lot of things to create some excitement about this program, but I think it'll be very, very positive. Secondly, we are continuing to work on the airport land lease, as it relates to the solar project. That contract is coming along very well. Obviously, we had a good basis for it, because we already had a contract that was in place, so that's moving quickly. The big issue there is the FAA, and making sure that they agree that the solar panels up at the airport will have no negative impact on the pilots and the flights up there. So, that's moving forward in a real positive direction, so I feel very good about that as well. I do want to talk about something that Denise had talked about, because I was very impressed and very pleased with the General Government Subcommittee meeting. As you know, we've had a team of people working on the blight ordinance for some time, and there's been a tremendous amount of work that's went into it. And I got to admit, when, after two readings, we sent it back to committee, it was a little frustrating to me, but I got to say, that work in the Subcommittee, I thought was tremendous. It was positive, we came to reasonable compromises on it, everybody was working to, how do we make it better? And I wanted to comment, and I've never met either of these gentlemen today, along with the general Subcommittee, David Smick and George Chenier, I hope I say them right, two, at one time, members of the Town Council many years ago, were involved. I was just impressed, and it was nice to know, you know, there wasn't anyone who said, "No, we're not going to change," you know? We actually made some changes, they were all for the better, and we brought together a product tonight that I think is very good. I want to particularly compliment our Inspection Services Director, Andy Pelletier, who, you know, it's difficult, once you spend months and months drafting a document, to change it. And he came forward with some real positive recommendations, and worked with this, with the General Government Committee, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciated all the work that went into it, and I think the product is much better. To that, Mr. Chairman, tonight we're going to be having a presentation, and I just wanted to kind of make a couple of comments in going into that. Tie and bond, and I want the public to understand the dynamics of this landfill issue as to who's who, because it gets really tricky. There's a lot of people who don't understand the representations of different people for different kinds of organizations. So, I wanted to make it clear tonight, because I think the public needs to understand who's supporting who in these issues, right? So, the landfill is essentially the Southbridge Recycling and Disposal Park, SRDP, I guess it's called, is being, it's a town-owned facility that is being managed right now by Casella, John Casella and his firm, and they have their own engineering firm that works with them on issues. That is a company named Sandborne Head. We don't work with them directly as a Town, that's not our engineer, it's an engineer for Casella and the landfill group. What we do have is, we have our own consulting company that works for the Town, and tonight we're going to be hearing a presentation from that company. They don't have any representation of Sandborne Head, they don't particularly care if John Casella or Casella Organization makes money or not, that's not their goal. Their goal is to represent the best interests of the Town as it relates to that landfill. And there's a gentleman who is sort of the person on behalf of the Town that is assigned to that particular site, is going to be making a presentation, his name is Jeffrey Arps, he's an LSP. He's the guy that really communicates with Department Environmental Protection, and puts the Town's position forward on any landfill issue. Again, I want to make it clear, because people get confused by who's who. Tie and Bond does not represent the landfill or Sandborne Head, they represent us. And when I look to decisions and comments about what's at the landfill, I don't go ask Mr. Casella or his organization, I go to Tie and Bond, and I, because they're the neutral party, they're the party representing us. So I wanted to make that clear, because there's a lot of confusion publicly about that. Tonight they're going to be making, as you know, a presentation about the landfill, and there's been a lot of question as to the current status of the landfill, particularly as it relates to the Town of Charlton and some of the well issues there. And this board has been looking at that issue for quite some time, and I thought it was important, and I know this board thought it was important, that the public cares, and that this has been a very transparent process as to what's been going on. I've met, and I've had the Town Administrator of the Town of Sturbridge, and the Town Administrator of the Town of Charlton, at a meeting with me in Tie and Bond, and let them ask any question that they wanted to, to our consultant, because I want them to know what we know, and I want this to be a transparent and open process, and that they feel comfortable that they can get any of their questions answered. So that occurred, there's been nothing hidden from any Town. Any document that they wanted, there's public documents, we gave them to them, and we presented information. The LSP, in fact, for Charlton, came to the meeting and asked questions as well, so everybody had a chance to do that. Now, as you know, there's been a variety of studies, environmental studies have been, that have been going on at that landfill. That's what tonight's about. We want to hear the result of those environmental studies, and bring everybody, including the general public- general public, up to speed on where we are today as it relates to those issues. So with that, we have David Murphy, who's one of the managers of Tye and Bond, and we have Jeffrey Arps, who is the LSP, they'll call him the Environmental Specialist. He's the go-to guy when it comes to environmental issues as it relates to this park.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for your announcements. You kind of went ahead. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Presentations. It's a Tye and Bond update on landfill testing, and that will be by, again, David Murphy, the PE, and the LSP Jeffrey Harps. Harps, I hope, sorry if I said that right, or incorrect. And again, just for those that are here tonight, this is an agenda item, so this is a presentation. There will not be any discussion or any questions going on unless the council has questions. We will be able to ask questions to the presenter, but as far as the general public, there will not be any citizen questions or input. But with that said, we do have a special council of the whole meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. where this council will be publicly discussing the results and the findings in an open meeting, and at that time, the citizens will be allowed to ask their questions. But we do have a special council of the whole meeting scheduled this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. So again, as the council chair, I want to make this transparent, and I want to let the public know what's going on, as our town manager has said, but at the same time, I do not want to shut off our public from asking questions, so therefore, that's why this meeting has been scheduled on Thursday. With that said, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you very much, Council and Town Manager. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. Tye and Bond is the town's consultant, as the town manager has said. My name is David Murphy. I'm a professional engineer with 31 years of landfill experience. Jeff Arps, our licensed site professional is with us. Jeff has 24 years of experience. Tye and Bond is a firm of 280 professionals. We represent over 150 municipalities around the New England area. We've been around for about 105 years. Our headquarters is in South, in Westfield. We also have an office right here in Worcester. The town, as it's been stated, is the owner of the land, owner of the landfill itself. We have the town's engineer for the landfill, providing professional engineering services, hydrogeologic services, third-party review, contract assistance, but representing the town of Southbridge. We've been doing all the groundwater sampling as well around the site. We've made multiple presentations before the council in the past. Jeff serves as the independent licensed site professional. He is the professional responsible for the state of Massachusetts under any 21E action, and Jeff will be making the majority of the presentation tonight. The operator of the landfill, which is under contract with the town, is Casella Way Systems. They have two consultants on board, Sandborne Head and Associates. They provide the primary, the engineering for the landfill, and Gold or Associates provides additional support for hydrogeological. We work with them, but not for them. Overview of the landfill, just for background. It's a 52-acre site, began operations in 1979 as a former wood waste dump. The landfill's been constructed in multiple phases. There's a graphic that I'll put up in a minute. Phase 1 through 3B was constructed without a technical liner, although it has glacial till, fairly thick deposits of a low permeability glacial till beneath it. Phases 3C through 6 were constructed with a single composite liner system, which means it has a clay layer and a synthetic layer and a drainage layer with piping on top of it. Phases 7 and forward was a double composite liner system. There are multiple cells within Phase 7. That's a double composite liner system is two systems. The lower, the upper system is a clay layer, a synthetic layer, and a drain layer with piping systems. Below that is a full collection system below that for any, to capture any leakage. That leakage system has been in place under Phase 7 for quite some time, functioning quite well. There's an attempt right now to permit the expansion of the landfill to extend the lifespan beyond 2017. That's ongoing, as we all know. Phases 1 through 3B suggest, have been suggested as a possible source of the impacts to the private wells on H-Foot Road. Tye and Bond was brought on together with, working with the folks at Sandborne Head to do this investigation. It's been ongoing now since, for nine months since October. This is just the graphic I told you about, that the light blue on the left side shows all the Phase 7 cells that are double composite lined with a full leak detection layer beneath it, in addition to the primary liner above it. The purple layers and the green layers are the older sections of the landfill typically referred to as the unlined portion. If there is a section of landfill that the contamination is likely to come from, it's those two. And the brown layers up in the top right corner would be the single composite liner With that, I want to turn it over to Jeff. Again, he's our licensed site professional. Jeff has been leading this investigation, and hopefully, we'll walk through this fairly rapidly. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Jeff Arps. I'm a licensed site professional with Tye and Bond. I'm the licensed site professional for the MCP part of this project. As part of the Phase 7 permitting, the landfill is required to sample houses around the landfill. It's set up such that they sample 1/3 of the houses every year and on a rotating basis, so eventually, after three years, all the houses have been sampled. The sampling that was done in September 2015 resulted in the detection of chlorinated hydrocarbons in one of the wells, 65 H-Foot Road. That triggered a notification to Mass DEP, and DEP made the decision to move the landfill project out of the solid waste division and into the waste site cleanup division. So this is a map of the site. You can see H-Foot Road is up in the upper left-hand corner. The loop down below is Eleanor Lane, and you can see the relationship to the location of the landfill. North is to your left, so just keep that in mind. It's not up. That'll throw you off. So the detection was a two-hour reportable condition to DEP. DEP made us establish a 500-foot radius around that house, and then as we had detections in other homes, there were additional 500-foot radii that were added around that. They consider this a critical exposure pathway. CEP is an MCP definition. That's if you have a site-related contaminant in a potable well, they consider that a CEP. DEP required that the landfill provide bottled water to those homes that had firm detections and continue to assess the groundwater conditions around the landfill. We're currently sampling 48 to 50 individual homes on a quarterly basis. This is a map that shows the, each of those circles is one of the 500-foot radii. The properties shown in orangish reddish there are the ones that have had the detection of the six CVOCs, that's chlorinated volatile organic compounds. And that's important because those six compounds are kind of the signature, the suite of contaminants that are of concern here. It's trichloroethylene, cis-1,2-dichloroethylene, 1,1-dichloroethylene, 1,1-dichloroethylene, chlorobenzene, and 1,4-dioxane. Keep that in mind. Those six compounds are the six compounds we're dealing with.
You're good. I'm just having our sound guys bring you up a little bit.
I can't get any closer. So Mass DEP's position is that the landfill is the source. They base that strictly, as far as I can tell, on proximity to the homes. Their conceptual site model is that the leachate from the landfill is migrating in a northeasterly direction toward H-Foot Road, toward Eleanor Lane. And their strong suggestion is that a potable water line be put in to provide municipal water to those homes. Some of the concerns we have with their conceptual site model is that H-Foot Road is at the top of a ridge, and it is about 80 feet above the landfill. As part of the investigation, Sandborne Head has placed pressure transducers which monitor the elevation of the groundwater in these wells, in the, they're actually in the potable wells. So as people turn their pumps on, we see the water level drop. They turn the pump off, we see the water level come back. So even under those kind of pumping conditions, as dry as conditions have been, we're still not seeing any scenario where groundwater from the landfill could migrate to the northeast toward those homes. There's still about an 80-foot difference in the hydraulic head between the wells and the landfill. As we all know, water does not flow uphill. The other thing is the suite of contaminants that I mentioned, they are detected in a handful of houses on H-Foot Road, but they are not detected at the landfill. Dave mentioned that the quote "unlined" portions of the landfill are thought to be the source of that. Groundwater monitoring wells are in place around those cells. They've never detected the six compounds together in a single well, going back, you know, as far back as groundwater data is available. We've had occasional detections, you know, in a single part-per-billion type of concentration or less, sporadically detected around the landfill, but never have we seen these six compounds detected in a single well. So that's just the listing of the compounds there. One of the biggest problems is 1,4-dioxane. 1,4-dioxane is detected not just in that handful of wells, but in quite a few wells. It's somewhat of an emerging contaminant. EPA has been studying it. It is practically infinitely soluble in groundwater, so when you have groundwater contamination, typically, the water travels at one velocity and the contaminants are slower due to their solubilities or the size of the molecules, that kind of thing. But 1,4-dioxane basically just goes as fast as the water goes. So a lot of times, you'll see 1,4-dioxane indicate the leading edge of a contaminant plume. But 1,4-dioxane is also present in a lot of household products. Procter &amp; Gamble has a statement on its website that they're trying to reduce their 1,4-dioxane concentrations of their products down to 25 parts per million. That's 25,000 parts per billion, and we're chasing, you know, one part per billion. So while it hasn't been assessed, there is a feeling that the septic systems on H-Foot Road, nearly all those homes have septic systems. They've likely been discharging these, you know, laundry soap, those kind of products into the septic system, that that might be a contributing factor here. It's also in laundry discharge and shampoos, aircraft deicing, but we've not found it at the airport. So the EPA considers it a likely carcinogen. They've established a drinking water guideline, I'm sorry, Massachusetts has established a drinking water guideline of 0.3 parts per billion. That's 300 parts per trillion, so we're really, really getting down in the low concentrations. There was a study done by Dorson at AL that they kind of back-calculated what the risk would be if we looked at it a little bit differently, and they came up with about 350 micrograms per liter as being sufficiently protective. And as I mentioned, you know, these levels are really, really low. They're really challenging the capabilities of the analytical instruments. A lot of times, what we're getting are what they call estimated concentrations. That's below the level that the lab can reliably report. While they can see it lower, they can't really quantify it. So we don't consider those to be true detections. They consider those to be estimated. So as I mentioned, Sandborne Head is working for Casella. They, before they do anything at the landfill, they run the plan by me. I review it, provide input, and then they go ahead and do the actual fieldwork. They've been installing bedrock monitoring wells and boreholes around the landfill and using borehole geophysics to get a better understanding of the bedrock configuration. OTV, ATV, HPFM, and other technologies, which I'll explain very briefly. So they measure, they have a heat pulse flow meter that will monitor the water temperature so you can tell if there's vertical flow within a well, so the deeper fractures may be flowing up into the shallower fractures and vice versa, so it monitors for that. An optical televiewer is actually what it sounds like. It's a camera that goes down the borehole and actually looks at the rock and looks at the fractures to identify where flow might be happening. An acoustical televiewer is a, it's a transducer that spins at high frequency, and the feedback that you get from the bedrock provides information on fracture flow and that kind of information. Yeah, so those are the big ones. There's a number of very deep boreholes at the landfill to look at. There's an onsite production well that was 933 feet deep. There was another well over at the airport, and they actually performed the geophysics on the well at 65 H-Foot Road, in addition to two new boreholes, SH3 and SH4 that were advanced on the northeastern side of the landfill, basically between the landfill and H-Foot Road. So once you've identified where the fractures are, what they've been doing is, once they identify the fractures that have water flow, is they take inflatable packers, which is what it sounds like. It's like an inflatable inner tube type thing. They drop that down in the well, and they inflate the packer above and below where the fractures are, and then you pump that water out so that the sample you're getting is just from that fracture. And based on that data, they can have some idea which fractures have contamination and which ones don't, can kind of help define where the contamination might be coming from and provide some information on how much water comes out of each fracture. So what the results show is that the bedrock is fractured in a north, sorry, northwesterly direction, meaning that groundwater flow is to the northwest. The neighborhood is to the northeast, so it's cross gradient, not down gradient of the landfill. That's in both the shallow bedrock, the deep bedrock that's been explored so far, and the overburden is basically, you know, the groundwater above the bedrock. So everything, all those three media, all show groundwater flowing to the northwest. The other thing to consider is the concentrations on H-Foot Road are quite elevated in some of the wells. Those are, if the landfill were the source, we would expect to see those same concentrations, I'm sorry, those same contaminants at much higher concentrations. If they're going to be considered a source, they got to be much higher than what's being detected down gradient, and we don't see that here. So these are just some maps showing the groundwater flow direction. You can see the arrows pointing to the northwest. This is overburden in April of this year, and that's the overburden in June. This is the bedrock. Note that the contours go up into, along H-Foot Road and Eleanor Lane. That's because we have depth information, elevation information from those wells in that neighborhood, so we're able to extend those contours up to there and ensure that the conditions we're seeing at and around the landfill extend up into that neighborhood. This is June 2016, shows the same thing. So Mass DEP has continued to let us know that they don't agree necessarily with our They said that basically, they don't think we could ever prove this negative and prove that the, that the landfill is not the source. Done an awful lot of work, taken an awful lot of samples. There's more monitoring wells around this landfill than any landfill I've ever worked on. And again, they keep coming back to suggesting that someone just install a water line. So both the town and Casella are currently considering our options here. There is some effort being put into trying to possibly identify another source, likely somewhere along H-Foot Road. There are local industries in Charlton that have histories of using these same contaminants. But in the meantime, they're providing bottled water, and they've also been installing some carbon systems that will treat the water so that people don't have to do everything out of bottles. So our conclusion at this point is, based on a preponderance of the evidence, there is no full information collected to date to support a conclusion that the landfill is the source. Same, we'll be doing our best to convince the EP of that.
Let me just state for the record, Jeff is the LSP for the project. Tye and Bond is the engineering firm for the project, so there's two opinions actually being rendered here tonight. We can find no evidence to conclude that the landfill is the source today. We cannot find it. So it's also important for the council to understand that we were given a charge, we were given a mission by your town manager, and that mission was, independent of what you find, it does not matter. And we actually had that same discussion with other towns when we had the meetings several, a while ago, is that we were requested to look, search, and find. There was no mission, there was no agenda. There was simply a neutral position, and this is the conclusion we've come up with to date. We cannot find a connection, particularly between those suites of contaminants in the landfill. So that's, I think we should open it up to questions for the council.
Do we have any questions from the council? I have a question. I know you, in the first part of the presentation, I think this is for you, Jeffrey, it says that... that affected homes are 80 feet above. Is there any way we, I know we don't, it's kind of tough, but to show that kind of where those homes are, because I'm trying, because according to what you've reported and what the findings is that the elevation, the water, they're up here and our landfill, or our landfill's here. And so, again, I think, trying to understand this whole process, I know the wells are certain footage down, but according to what you just stated was that the flow is going contrary.
Right. This is the bedrock flow in April. I'm sorry, I don't have a pointer. The, you can see the loop of Eleanor Lane, 65 each foot road is the property, kind of see, it kind of looks like a hockey stick.
The first red dot up top?
Yeah, you can see that first red dot, that's 65 each foot road. So you can see the groundwater flow is this way, the house is that way. You know, the 80 feet is topography, so at the top of each foot road, around where the houses are to where the landfill is, you know, it's all very undulating, but it's about 80 feet. But as you said, some of the wells are 3, 4, 5, 600 feet deep up on the, up on each foot road. But even though the borehole is that deep, I mean, the bottom of the borehole may be below the landfill, but the water in that well is still above where the water at the landfill is. So even if the borehole is that deep, it's still, you know, it's a downward, water flows downhill, and that's the way it's going.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, and I just kind of want to make clear here a couple of points, right? So we just heard the chairman ask that the wells with the water are uphill, so to speak, of the landfill, so the issue is the water can't flow up, water only goes down. That's one point, right? And then the second point I think I understand is, I do understand is the water direction is moving not towards the houses, but in the opposite direction of the houses as to the way the groundwater flows, so it's not even flowing towards that direction. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And then the third thing I'm trying to be, just want to be really clear is, you talk about a suite of contaminants that are coming, that are in the landfill area, in the wells tested by landfill. None of those area wells around the landfill show the same contamination suite and another number of different chemicals as what's in those wells, so it's, one would think if they're in the wells, the same amount would be around the landfill. Is that your point?
Yes.
Okay, and now?
Yeah, and at much greater concentrations if they're going to be the source. So you would expect to see, you know, hundreds of parts per billions of these contaminants to be a source to detect, you know, 10 parts per billion up on each foot road.
And if it was, if it was from the landfill, the contaminations would be heavier at the landfill and then go down away from the landfill, is that, would that be true?
Exactly, yes.
So it wouldn't be the opposite, it wouldn't be heavier at the homes and lighter at the landfill, it'd be heavier at the landfill and lighter at the homes, if it was in fact traveling that way, is that?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Now, the comment that concerned me is the DEP comment, and you're saying DEP now is still pointing at the landfill. That was before this information is going to be released to them, is one. I hope, because I know that we're, you guys were filing paperwork with them.
Today.
So today. So they don't have this latest data result, well, they do as of today. They have it today, but they haven't reported back in any way to us about what they have.
Correct. Under the MCP, Jeff is the LSP representing you, is required to file an IRA status report to the state. That report, this most recent status report, which we got a two-week extension on, was submitted today to the DEP. They now are reviewing that, well, starting tomorrow, they'll be reviewing that report with this new information, with all the different packer testings and well testing results, and we hope that they will understand, they will, they're professionals just like us, that they will see that and hopefully will come to the same conclusion.
Okay, so my understanding of this process is that when these contaminants appeared in these wells, one of the things that DEP did is make Casella, the SRDEP or however they do their acronym, said that they had to do this IRA plan to look at how to resolve that issue, how to study that issue. DEP, I understand, was at the table discussing that plan and actually made changes to the plan, and that plan now is saying that there's, the contamination is not coming from the landfill, right? Is that correct? So everything DEP understood advised as to what they had to do to study the potential contamination, where they were coming from. So now the results are in and they don't lead the town or us to believe that it's coming from the landfill. And then, so now DEP, we've met the standards, I guess. So what, have the analysis that Time Bond done on this and looked at, does it meet pretty much the standards that DEP is asking for, for an evaluation of this kind of site?
Well, because it's a privatized program, DEP doesn't dictate what we do. They make, you know, we tell them what we're going to do, and they say, "Well, it'd be better if you did this," or maybe "While you're doing that, if you could do this too." In the meeting where we asked, "What more can we do to prove this to your satisfaction?" That's when they answered, "Well, you know, it's such a big site and bedrock's so deep and it, you know, we don't think you could ever really prove that it's not the landfill." That was their conclusion.
So it doesn't matter how much money is spent, doesn't matter how much testing is done, DEP is kind of saying that, you know, you never can say 100% that it's coming from a landfill. That's where we're at, I guess, at this point. Even though if we made reasonable process and stuff, that's where DEP is at.
If we were able to identify another source where we found these same contaminants on a property in Charlton or along H-foot Road, I think that's about the only thing that would get us, to get them to accept that fact that it's not the landfill.
Thank you, Jeff.
Counselor Clements.
Thank you. Just, Jeffrey, you are a licensed site professional. I'm just curious, how long have you been in the business? I always like to put credentials out a little bit, you know, so it's your...
I've been at Time Bond 22 years, and I got 24 years total.
24 years total, okay. Great. And in your professional opinion, not coming from our site?
Based on everything I've seen, that's my conclusion.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other counselors have any questions? Again, to our consultants, Time Bond, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Arps, thank you so much for this presentation. We, as a council, will discuss this further on Thursday evening. Thank you so much. Moving on to agenda item number eight, Citizens Forum, and if there's any counselor, any citizens that would like to address the counselors with something that is not on tonight's agenda, again, you cannot address anything to this council with, if this is an item that's on our agenda. So please, you'll have five minutes, keep it respectful, and state your name and address. Thank you.
My name's John Palowski. We live at 3 Jenison Street in Southbridge. Mr. Chairman, when you say that nothing can be discussed, it's on the agenda, do you mean that even a common sense, two-sentence comment can't be made about the preceding?
Correct. You cannot. That I would prefer, and would ask you to bring that comment on Thursday evening.
That will be televised?
Yes.
Well, I will just wait till then, but I think it's unfortunate that, I don't want to use the word correction, but I think our common sense has been insulted with one, with two presumptions that were made up there. That, and also additional information was volunteered that isn't really a part of what we paid them to do. But that's, we'll do that Thursday.
Thank you.
Another comment I want to make, a counselor at a recent meeting suggested that it was unfortunate that the town, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, that's why I'm not using anyone's name, but they felt that the reason our water rates were going up, our sewage rates are going up, was because of a failure to borrow money for a pretreatment, leachate pretreatment. No, I'm not saying you said that, sir. Actually, don't let me put words in your mouth, that way I won't. How did you put it, Counselor Manah? Because I don't want...
If I may, I had said...
I just, before you comment, we are not going to get into debate with a citizen here. We're going to keep it respectful, and the minute it gets out of hand...
It won't get out of hand. There's no, out of hand in a year.
So if I could just clarify for the community, I stated that $1.7 million of the 9%, our sewer rates were going up 9%, and $1.7 million of that was factored in because we bonded that money out, and we could have gotten that money, but members of the town council didn't want that money because it was coming from Casella, and it was with a condition for a leachate plant that could have brought us in money as well. The leachate plant that would have been up at the landfill, and it would have been treating the leachate right on-site, which is the most effective way to treat it, it's the safest way to treat it. And that's what I said. And thank you for letting me clarify, Mr. Chair, and I will not comment anymore on this.
And thank you for the clarification, because I don't want to put words in her mouth. But when I come up here and some other people come up here, you remind us to be respectful.
Correct.
Now, part of respect includes respect for the law. If we were to go and treat that leachate up there, it would have still been pretreated leachate. The conditions of the site assignment, a site assignment condition, is that no leachate, any leachate can go to the water treatment plant. If we did that, we would have been in violation of 310 CMR and possibly other state laws. So that's not the only reason. I didn't care if the money was coming from Casella. If Casella was to build a plant up there, and I am not speaking for even one other person that's opposed to the landfill expansion, I'm speaking only for myself. If the landfill operator was to invest their own money to put a complete water treatment plant up there, complete, so that it was good enough quality to bring the water over and sell it to Millennium for their cooling, I personally would have been fine with that. But that's not what was being asked to do. They were asking us to borrow money for them. So, and I don't like that only the sewer rate payers are paying for that water going to the airport. That's another issue. I feel all the taxpayers should be paying for that. It's another issue. It was something that was discussed at the hearing that wasn't televised. It's a decision that was made by the hearing officer, and we don't have much more say in that. But I think that would have been the most fair, because it's really, not in all cases, but it's the people, many of the people in town with the larger properties, not necessarily the most valuable, but often they are, the wealthier people in town, they're not having to pay for that. But it's going to benefit their airplanes. But I feel badly that things don't go, like, for example, we were told that was more than a landfill, that road was more than a landfill driveway. There's one building up there, and a local businessman wanted to put 12, wanted to buy 12 acres, and was told there's nothing available.
Excuse me, Mr. Palowski.
Okay, so my five minutes are up?
Yes.
That's okay. We'll talk more Thursday. But it's not only what people say in a presentation, I've noticed, looking back at seven, eight years, it's what's not said, what's not volunteered by the volunteers that often get us in trouble. People aren't blatantly lying, it's just the omissions that are going to get us in trouble, I fear. Thank you, and thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you. I just want to address one comment that Mr. Palowski made in regards to the respect for the law. I understand your position in regards to respecting the law, and that's something that we, as counselors, need to uphold, and as of right now, we have not violated that law. So I just want to reiterate, for someone that might have heard that and thought and didn't get the whole conversation, because sometimes people just take bits and pieces of conversations and make what they want of it. But as of right now, this council has not violated any laws, and as, and while I sit here as a chair, I will do everything I can to not violate the law. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that is not on tonight's agenda? You have five minutes. Please state your name, address, and remember to keep it respectful.
Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. Thanks Denise for bringing up, looking up, I think you were looking on the website about the fireworks. I just wanted to call people's attention to the website if they have any need for information about things for the fireworks or the bicentennial, southbridge200.org, because I honestly don't know either. I just know how I'm getting up there. So, okay, what I wanted to say is, Southbridge lost one of its best cheerleaders a few weeks ago. Linus Bissett had a good heart and the best of intentions for the town and its citizens. He was always cheerful and friendly, and I never heard him say anything malicious about anyone. He lived up to his name, smiley. I remember tabling downstairs for bicentennial last spring. Linus walked up and was so excited to talk about his taxi business as well as about the bicentennial. Then when the manager walked up, walked by, Linus's eyes lit up as he talked to Mr. San Angelo. The last time I talked to Linus was right before the town election this June, and Linus was landscaping in his yard and was proud to tell me about it. Of course, he was smiling. So thanks for all you've done for the town and for humanity. Rest in peace, Linus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle, and I must agree that Mr. Bissett was a tremendous asset to our community. Any other citizens that would like to address the town council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, moving on to agenda item number nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Al David Covino of Fisdale as constable for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2019.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda number 10, vote to confirm the appointment of Richard Nash, a citizen member, to general government subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2017. Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item number 11, vote to confirm the appointment of Stephen Lozo as a citizen member to the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Agenda number 12, vote, motion carries, agenda number 11. Agenda number 12, vote to accept the bylaws proposed to manage and control blighted properties. First reading. I'm going to ask the counselors again to help, as it's a very long document. We have a highlighted version in our packet, and the blue signifies the change, and the red signifies what we will cross out, what has been crossed out. Do not read the red, please. Excuse me, in, excuse me. Yes, let's read anything that's not crossed off, okay? There's a discrepancy there. Yes, okay, sorry. All right? Even if it's in red, please, let's not read anything that's not crossed off like that we can make this go forward. So I will open up a bylaw, a bylaw to manage and control blighted properties in the town of Southbridge. Whereas, the town of Southbridge believes that the town, that the town should adopt a bylaw to control blighted properties, and whereas, the town of Southbridge believes it is its... is in its best interest to have all the tools at its disposal to control blighted properties and whereas the town of Southbridge believes it is in the best interests of the citizens of the town of Southbridge for their health, safety, and well-being to control blighted properties. Now therefore, the town of Southbridge acting by and through the town council hereby takes the following action. The town council of Southbridge, of the town of Southbridge in, in the exercise of fire conferred on it by section eight of article...
89.
89. I was going to count all these numeral letters here. Of the amendments to the state constitution and by its own home rule charter does hereby adopt and enact the following addition to the code of bylaws, Town of Southbridge Commonwealth of Massachusetts to be indexed as chapter nine, section 301, and to be known as controlled blighted properties. Okay. Yes. At this time, I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess.
Still moved. Second.
Simple hand vote. All those in favor? Seven zero. We will have a five-minute recess. Welcome back. Sorry for the delay, but we will continue. I will continue reading section nine, 301. The purpose. A. It is hereby found and declared that there exists within the town of Southbridge numerous real properties which are in blighted condition. Many of these properties are essentially abandoned. Some are in violation of multiple aspects of state and local building and sanitary codes. These code violations may include, but are not limited to, unoccupied, excuse me, buildings susceptible to vandalism and/or open structures rendering them unsafe and dangerous, yards full of litter and trash, unsecured houses, unshovelled snow, and foliage rendering sidewalks impassable. B. The existing of such blight contributes to the decline of, of town neighborhoods. It is further found that the existence of such blighted property encourages temporary occupancy, if abandoned by transients, drug users, and persons engaged in criminal activities, adversely affecting the economic, economic well-being of the town of Southbridge and the health, safety, and well-being of Southbridge residents and creates significant costs to Southbridge by virtue of the need for constant monitoring and frequent boarding and security. C. It is further found that the, many of the blighted properties can be rehabilitated, reconstructed, demolished, and/or reused so as to provide decent, safe sanitary housing or commercial facilities, and that such rehabilitation, reconstruction, demolition, and/or reuse would eliminate, remedy, and/or prevent the adverse conditions described above. D. It is the intent of this article to protect and preserve public health, safety, security, and well-being of all occupants of butters and neighborhood by: One. Requiring all residential, commercial, and industrial property owners to properly maintain properties free from blighted conditions and: Two. Regulating the maintenance of residential, commercial, and, and industrial properties to prevent blighted and unsecure properties. Section nine dash 302. Definitions will be read by Councillor Clements.
Thank you. When used in this chapter unless at contrary intention clearly appears, the following terms shall have the following meanings. A. Blighted properties or blighted properties, or the condition of blight involving real property in the town of Southbridge shall mean any building, structure, parcel of land, or any part of a building or structure that is a separate unit, whether commercial or residential, whether occupied or unoccupied, in which at least one of the following conditions exists. Number one, the property is not being adequately maintained and secured as documented by the enforcement officer as the term is defined herein, based upon, without limitation, the following factors or similar factors: missing or boarded windows or doors, collapsing or missing walls, roofs or floors, siding that is seriously damaged or missing, fire damage, a foundation that is structurally faulty, and other structural deficiencies that contribute to blight as determined by the enforcement officer or his/her agents; the accumulation outside of interior furniture, garbage, trash, and/or junk, and/or the existence of inoperable, neglected motor vehicles, boats, motorcycles, or other inoperable machinery, or other refuse, unless otherwise licensed to do so. The property, two, the property or its owners has or have been cited for violations as documented by an enforcement officer or his or her designated agents, and said violations have not been corrected. Four point, number three, the property is fire hazard as documented by the fire department. Number four, because of fire, wind, or other natural disaster, or because of physical deterioration, the property is no longer habitable as a dwelling or useful for the purpose for which the completed structure was originally intended. Five, the property is a vacant building as defined here, hereunder, or: Six, it is determined by an enforcement officer or his or her designated agents that the building, structure, or parcel of land is in a condition which poses a serious nuisance or serious threat to safety, health, and/or well-being of the town of Southbridge. B. Board of Health shall mean the board as defined and designated by the town's governance documents. C. Building shall mean a structure having a roof supported by column, columns, or walls resting on its own foundations and designed for shelter, housing, or enclosure of persons, animals, or property of any kind. D. Costs shall mean any and all expenses paid or incurred by the town for work done or efforts expended in furtherance of carrying out the intent and directives of this bylaw, including but not limited to all technical, administrative, and/or professional fees, and all court costs and attorney's fees for all efforts to carry out this bylaw. E. Inoperable slash neglected motor vehicle shall mean a motor vehicle, whether registered or not, that remains in condition of disrepair or partially dismantled with no progress toward restoration, or a vehicle showing neglect by invasion of foliage, rodent nesting, or progressive deterioration, or other condition attributable to neglect. F. Inspector of Buildings shall mean the director of the inspections department as well as the electrical, electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, and/or the gas inspector, whether they are permanent or temporary in their service. Enforcement officer shall mean the inspector of Buildings, director of public health, police chief, fire chief, and/or their designated agents. H. Local agent shall mean an agent located within thirty driving miles distance of the property in question. I. Owner shall mean an individual business entity, voluntary association, nonprofit organization which alone or jointly or severally with others: One. Has legal title to any building, structure, and property; or: Two. Has care, charge, or control of any such building, structure, or property in any capacity, including but not limited to agent, executor, executrix, administrator, administratix, trustee, or guardian of the estate of the holder of legal title; Or: Three. Is a lessee under a written agreement; Or: Four. Is an agent, trustee, or other person appointed by the courts invested with possession or control of such building, structure, or property; Or: J. Or? J. Property shall mean, and there's, there's an or at the end there, Andy, I don't think that or should be there. Not sure where the or comes from. So let's go on to J. Property shall mean any real residential, commercial, or industrial property or portion thereof located in the town of Southbridge, including buildings or structures situated on the property. For purposes of this article, property does not include property owned or subject to the control of the town of Southbridge or any of its governmental bodies. K. Receiver shall mean a court-appointed individual who serves as a general contractor and whose duties and powers shall be specified by the court in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 111, Section 127i. L. Scoring, securing measures shall mean any actions that are taken to prevent unauthorized persons' access to the property, including but not limited to erecting fencing around the property, boarding up doors and windows, and the like. M. Town shall mean the town of Southbridge. O. Vacant shall mean either, and this was a big change, any unoccupied real property which is empty or remains empty due to abandonment, or is not continuously maintained, or which persistently or repeatedly becomes unprotected or unsecured, or which has become occupied by unauthorized persons, or which displays conditions of blight. And two, any unoccupied building, structure, or property displaying conditions of blight. Do you want 903?
Excuse me, no. Section 903 and section 9304 will be read by Councillor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So section nine, 303, blighted conditions. A. Creating a condition of blight. It shall be a violation of this bylaw for any owner of a property, vacant or otherwise, in the town of Southbridge to allow or cause to be created intentionally or through neglect to take corrective action, any condition of blight on that property, or condition of blight caused by that property on any abutting properties. B. Correction of blighted, blighted conditions. The owners of such blighted property shall correct any condition of blight on such property or its uppertrons, I don't know what that word is. Section nine, 304, administration. A. Inspection authority. In order to properly protect the health and well-being of the people and the emergency responders of the town of Southbridge, enforcement officers or their authorized agents or representatives, upon reasonable cause, are authorized to enter, examine, and/or survey at any reasonable time, such places as they consider necessary. B. Investigation. The enforcement officers may undertake an investigation of any alleged violation of this section upon their own initiative or shall, upon receipt of a complaint from any individual, civic organization, or other governmental agency, undertake an investigation of the alleged violation. C. Orders to take corrective action. Upon a finding of a violation of the provisions of this section, the enforcement officer shall serve notice of the violation and in order to correct such violation upon the owners of the property by certified mail or in, or by in-hand service by a person authorized to do such. The order shall require the owners to take one or more of the following actions to bring the property into compliance with the requirements of this bylaw. One. To take any action that the enforcement officer deems necessary to correct the violations of this bylaw in order to assist the town of Southbridge in protecting the, the public health, safety, and well-being. To correct the violation within, or two, to correct the violation within seven days or within such time as the enforcement officer deems reasonable and necessary. Three. In instances where permits or other authorizations are required to file a completed application and any required plans for said permit for repair or rehabilitation, along with a schedule indicating a completion date for such work or its various phases. Such schedule shall be approved by the enforcement officer. D. Right of the town to effect repairs. Whenever a property owner fails, neglects, or refuses to make repairs or take other corrective actions specified in the order, the town officials may undertake such repairs or actions, or the town may seek a court-appointed receiver to manage the property and bring said property into compliance with all applicable statutes, regulations, and codes, or take other action the town official or enforcement officer determines is necessary when, in his or her judgment, a failure to make the necessary repairs or corrective actions will endanger the public's health, safety, and well-being. E. Recovery of costs. Notice of the intention of the towns to make such repairs or other corrective actions shall be served on the owners by certified mail or by service in hand by a person duly authorized to do such. When the repairs are made or other corrective actions are taken by the town of Southbridge, the cost of such repairs, which costs are understood to include all technical, administrative, and/or professional fees to accomplish these repairs and/or corrective actions, plus any and all court costs and attorney's fees for administration, processing, and/or prosecution of the collection of these costs shall constitute a debt in favor of the town against the owners of the repaired property. In the event that the owner fails, neglects, or refuses to pay the town the amount of debt within thirty days of the receipt of the notice of the debt, the town may place a lien on the property for such debt and/or may initiate a civil action against the owner in a court of competent jurisdiction to recover the debt. F. Multiple remedies. The enforcement remedies provided in this chapter are not intended to replace or supersede the following remedies already existing under current law, but are to be available in addition to these existing remedies to better address and confront the dire community problem of blighted properties. One, receivership, Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Section 1, 127i. Two, municipal charges lien, Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 58. Three, noncriminal disposition of bylaw violation, Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 21D. Four, removal and abatement of public nuisances, Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Sections 122 through 125. Five, demolition liens for common nuisances, Mass General Law, Chapter 139, Section 3A. Six, remedies provided by the state sanitary code and state building code.
Thank you. Sections 305 and 306 will be read by Councillor Steves.
Section nine dash 305, appeals. A. Right to hearing. Any person or persons upon whom any order has been served pursuant to any section of this bylaw and who is aggrieved by said order may appeal to the Board of Health, provided such petition must be filed in writing within seven days after the day the order was served. B. Hearing notice. Upon receipt of a petition from the Board of Health, sorry, let me read that. Upon receipt of a petition, the Board of Health shall in writing inform the petitioner and other affected parties. Affected parties shall include the occupants of all affected premises, if the petitioner is the owner, and the owner, if the petitioner is an occupant, of the date, time, and place of the hearing, and of their right to inspect and copy the enforcement officer's file and other public records concerning the matter to be heard. C. Appeal of final decisions. Any person aggrieved by the final decision of the Board of Health with respect to any order issued under the provisions of this bylaw may seek relief there from any, there from, in any court of competent jurisdiction as provided by the laws of this common law. Section nine dash 306, registration of vacant buildings required. A. Registration. One. Within thirty days of a building becoming vacant, and each January 1st thereafter, each owner of such vacant building shall register said property with the town of Southbridge's Director of Building Inspections. All registrations must state the owner's name, mailing address, physical address if different, telephone number, and email address if the individual has an email address. Two. If none of the owners are at an address within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or within thirty miles of Southbridge, the registration shall also include the name, address, phone number, and email address of a responsible local agent for purposes of securing and maintaining the property, for the purposes, purposes of notification in the event of an emergency affecting the public health, safety, and well-being, and for the service of any and all notices issued pursuant to this ordinance. Three. The failure to timely register a vacant building shall be a violation of this ordinance. Within the context of this chapter, timely shall mean registration no less than thirty days, I'm sorry, no later than thirty days after a building becomes vacant. B. Registration fees. One. An annual registration fee of $100 must accompany the registration form. The fee and registration are for the calendar year or the remaining portion of the calendar year in which registration was initially required. Subsequent registration and fees are due on or prior to January 1st of each year. Two. Failure to timely register any vacant real property shall be a violation of this bylaw, and a fee shall be imposed as a municipal charges lien on the property in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 40, Section 58. C. Maintenance requirements. One. Properties subject to this section shall comply with the current edition of 780 CMR, the Mass State Building Code, and shall be maintained in accordance with all applicable state sanitary codes, building codes, and local regulations. Two. The property must contain a posting with the name and twenty-four-hour contact phone number of the local owner or local agent responsible for the maintenance. This sign must be posted at the front of the property and must be legible and clearly visible from the public way and/or street. D. Once the property is no longer vacant or is sold, the owner must provide proof of sale or written notice of occupancy to the Director of Building Inspections. Section nine dash 307, penalties and enforcement. This section shall be enforced...
You got on a roll. We'll give you a break. Section nine, 307 and 308. Councillor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Section nine dash 307, penalties and enforcement. This section shall be enforced by the enforcement officer, the Director of Building Inspections, the Director of the Board of Health, health inspector, the police chief, the fire chief, and/or their designated agents. Upon failure to comply with any order issued under this section, the town may, in addition to the other penalties and actions: A. Bring civil or legal action against the owner to require compliance with the order, including but not limited to seeking a court-approved receiver for the property in violation. B. Issue fines whereby each separate offense of this section may be punishable by a fine of: One. First offense, $100 daily for each day the violation exists. Two. Second offense, $150 daily for each day the violation exists. Three. Third offense, in each subsequent offense, $200 daily for each day the violation exists. Any fines issued in any action to enforce this bylaw shall be instituted and enforced in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 21D. C. Undertake any other actions legally applicable and enforce in any other laws, codes, regulations, or bylaws. The imposition of any enforcement of any section of this bylaw shall not be construed to prevent the enforcement of the laws upon the owners and/or the premises for none, nor prevent the initiation of other enforcement measures or penalties. Failure to pay any fine arising from the enforcement of this chapter shall constitute a debt in favor of the town. The town may place a lien on the property for such debt and/or initiate a civil action against the owners in a court of competent jurisdiction to recover the debt. In addition to this debt amount, costs as defined in the definition section of this chapter shall be added to the debt to compromise the total lien amount. Section nine dash 308, severability. If any provision of this section is held to be invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction... If any provision of this section is held to be invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, then such provision shall be considered separately and apart from the remaining provisions, which small remain, which shall remain in full force and effect. The provisions of this section are effective immediately upon passage and all provisions shall be enforced immediately. All bylaws or parts of bylaws inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. This bylaw shall take effect on the date of passage.
We have read it. Any discussion? Counselor DePeteau.
Just wondering, Mr. Chair, regarding section nine dash three oh two definitions, line item number three on the original draft, which was omitted regarding property that is attracting illegal activity is documented by the police department and/or appropriate agents. Is there a reason that that line was taken out?
Can, Mr. Pelletier, can you come? Because I know this was discussed at the general government subcommittee, but I wasn't able to attend.
Good evening. Could you direct me to that section again?
It's section nine, three oh two definitions.
Yep.
And he's seeing where.
Item three.
Item three was omitted.
The illegal activity line.
I don't have the, I don't have the edited one.
You have the attractive illegal.
Discussion with the subcommittee and comments indicated that the illegal activity is totally coverable underneath the police laws. So the comments that were brought were that it was a redundant law, although I think a lot of this is based on other law, but we took it out because it is fully enforceable under the, the police laws. It was, it was due to a comment from a citizen.
Could we expand a little too? Also, I mean, there can be illegal activity in the best looking homes and such throughout. So while illegal activity can lead to blight and, and obviously illegal activity is a blight in and of itself to a neighborhood, it just wasn't conducive to what was being, the rest of what was here, and it can be, as Andy said, be covered by the law enforcement in general, regardless of the way the property looks and maintained and all that. So it just, it just didn't feel and seem right in this as something that we needed to state because it's already stated elsewhere, that we're not going to put up with illegal activity and we're going to get our law enforcement to oversee that.
If I may through the chair, in any other part of this, I could see your point, Counselor, as under definitions. I still see some, some teeth in that, in that line item.
He says, you, you just see that as a definition that it, it has teeth in it for us to use it against a blighted property, to say it's a blighted property because there's illegal activity.
I believe so.
It was originally put in there. I, I put it in there originally. When Ron called us together, we contributed our thoughts from our own codes. Public health nuisances include a lot of drug activity, prostitution, stuff like that. So I originally did put it in there, but again, as Ms. Clemens just pointed out, it seemed to take the intent or the power, not the power, the intent of the law away from the conditions of ugly blight and spread it out across potentially some of the upscale houses and some of the, you know, not houses that aren't necessarily taking down the values of the lands. So again, I removed it based on a, a citizen's comment, and we discussed it fully at the general government subcommittee and felt that it didn't harm the law to take it out.
If I may add to that, if I may add to, when you, when you read it and it says, is as documented by the police department, so already one of the enforcing agencies that is part of this blight law, if they've already documented it, they should be enforcing their, their self onto this situation before it then goes to Board of Health as a blight. It's already an illegal situation, which should be under the control of the police way before we impose some fine because somebody said, hey, that's blighted because there's prostitution going on. The police should have already made the arrest and got rid of the blight. So we shouldn't have to enforce it with a, maybe an appeals process or anything like that. If it's illegal, it's illegal. So yeah, it just seemed, I don't know.
It crosses a criminal, it crosses a criminal line rather than a civil line.
Describe that way, all right, I agree with you, Counselor.
Yeah, I mean, it just seemed too more over, yeah, just didn't need it, just, yeah.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Any further discussion, any other questions?
Okay.
Mr. Carrasco. At the general government subcommittee, I was asked to look at the charter and existing bylaws. I do have a memo that I wrote up that basically says that I couldn't identify any conflicts between the existing bylaws. There's something in our charter that says any bylaw proposed for amendment or appeal or repeal should, it has to be checked for the other bylaws to make sure that there's no conflicting. I did check the bylaws, and I did not note any, any conflicting parts of any other bylaw.
Thank you. I did read that email that you sent, and thank you for doing that work. So moving on, we do have it to vote. We, do we have a motion in a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor DePetro.
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yes.
Counselor Miana.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Counselor O'Clare.
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes.
Counselor Clement.
Yes.
Seventh.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, Counselors Forum, and I'll start, thirteen, excuse me, agenda item number thirteen, Counselors Forum, and I'll start with Counselor O'Clare. It's hot in here.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a couple of things. So I just wanted to, I just want to say Aaron Rosso, a Southbridge resident, is putting together efforts to, to really rebuild and expand the Southbridge Skate Park. If you've been down there, he's done a great job already of retooling a lot of the older ramps, repainting over a lot of the graffiti. He's now building a smaller area for beginners so that multiple age groups can now, you know, go to the park and use it. He's kind of in the next phase of that. He's also looking for local artists to, you know, spruce it up a little bit, volunteer some time to do some painting and things like that. And he also has a Facebook of this, it's called Southbridge Skate Park. A friend requested it set up that way, and you can see different raffles and different activities and things that he's doing down there. I know it's, it's a really great thing that he's taken upon himself to do for the community. So any little bit helps, you know, as far as participation or volunteer work or anything of that nature. Also, the, actually, I think that's actually all I have for tonight. So thank you very much, and have a good week.
Thank you. Just in regards to Mr. Rosso, I'm just going to ask if maybe we can have Mr. Rosso come in and speak with our town manager and see if we can officially appoint him to like the Southbridge Recreation Committee, where it can be something official, because I appreciate the work he's doing and I appreciate how involved he is, but I, I still want all the work to go through the proper channels and go through our, our rec department with Mr. Rosenfeld, and, and so I just, I want to make it, if we can, some type of official type of way, because again, my fear is there's money being collected, there's projects being done on town property. Is, has there been a waiver signed in regards to the construction of things? Because I would hate for an injury to happen and, you know, we as a town are not covering our bases. So again, I appreciate the work, but I would like to see if we can find a way to make it more an official recognition or get him involved in some way so then we don't, we're covered. Because if, if he's building ramps on town property and there's no waiver signed, and if he was to get hurt, we're liable. So again, I just, I want to be very careful, and again, I want the public to know and I want every counselor to know that I appreciate the work that Mr. Rosso is doing, and I know he's not doing it alone, he's working with a group, but at the same time, I want to make sure everything's going through the proper channel and that we're going through everything. Because at the end of the day, it's the town skate park, so I just want to make sure that if there's any liability issues that we're covering, making sure those are covered, and that we can find a way, if he's interested. Again, this is why I'm requesting, maybe we can get Mr. Rosso in to speak to our town manager, and if he's interested in becoming part of the recreation committee, I'm not sure, because I know at the end, we did have one, I don't know if it's been dissolved. Again, but again, I want things to go the right way because liability is my fear. Mr. Town Manager.
I'd like to address a couple of those issues, because I totally respect your point of view on this and had the same conversation. So currently, he is part of our adopt a park program, so in terms of working at the park, he's okay. If they were doing the building and structure and he's under our insurance policy, is frankly, anyone who uses that park is, even the skateboarders themselves are all covered under the insurance policy. So I'm not concerned with that piece of it. Eventually, once he builds this stuff, he's going to have to come before town council for, he's got to actually donate that property to the town, so the ramps he build have to officially become town property. So we're going to have to, like any other gift, we're going to have to accept that. The, the other component which I've been wary of, and I've stated a couple of times at this board meeting, is, is that him and his friends are collecting donations under his own sort of charity organization, and the town is not in any way involved in that process. And I'm not sure that I want the town to be involved in that process, because we don't have any employees that are going to sit there and count the money with him in, in that process. So I think, you know, I made a point here at these meetings to say to the public that if you decide to donate to Mr. Rosco for his, you know, he's saying he's going to take that money and donate it to the town, the town is not supporting that. I mean, that's his own private thing that he's doing, because I have no way to guarantee those funds. I said the same thing to the business community. If you donate it, there's no guarantee here, you know, just as you donate to the Boy Scouts or any other organization, you know, if you give them money, you got to trust it's going to go wherever they say it's going to go. That's your, you know, sort of give it your own risk. I don't want the town to be involved in that, because I don't have people to count the money or staff it or, or do that. So if he wants to raise money privately like any other organization, and then he wants to donate that as a gift to the town, that's great, but I don't have the capacity to kind of guarantee that fund. So I'd rather just say to the public, give it your own risk, and I appreciate he's been working hard, and we're seeing how the money is being spent, but I don't have any control over that, and I, I don't really want to get any more involved in that part of it.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't aware that he was part of the adopt the park program. I think, I think if we can get a list of other companies that have already signed up, I think, I think part of the adopt the park program was public recognition, so they know and, and their businesses can, you know, benefit from that publicity. I think if we can get a list from Mr. Rosenfeld to get, because again, I wasn't aware that he was one of the, the companies or individuals that have adopted that park, so.
I think it's on, I'll check, but I think it's on the recreation department website as to who is involved in that adopt the park program, so they are getting recognition that way. And we are talking about having signs for those members on the piece of property, a small sign on each of those properties, so I know Steve is working on that as well.
Okay, but if we can get a list like that, we could announce, I'll announce it during our next meeting, so then we can give proper recognition to those businesses. And thank you for answering that question in regards to my concern. Counselor O'Clare.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to touch on that, yeah, I know I said that he is collecting the, the donations. It is not going to the town of Southbridge, however, he has a pretty updated list of where the money's going and his progress that he's gone. So there's, 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 you know, a physical manifestation of that. So if anybody is worried about, you know, where their money's going, you can really just go down there, look at the before and after pictures and things of that nature too. So just wanted to, you know, say that at least. Thank you.
Thank you. All set with your forum?
Yes.
Okay, great. Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, I have been down to the skate park last week, and they have done an incredible, incredible job in refurbishing the skate park. And kudos to Aaron Rosso and all those who were involved with him, and kudos to our recreation director as well. Point of information, I do believe that there is no longer in operation a recreation committee. If you should decide to reestablish one, and I don't know if there is a need, only because the recreation director that we have is doing such a great job, but that's, that's up to, that's, that's a consideration for future. I also wanted to thank the council for the manner in which these meetings, this is my third meeting, and I'm finding that the meetings are really very respectful, very kind, and there are no attitudes or problems that are apparent, and I think that that's exactly what we need. We need to be tying things up together, working for the betterment of Southbridge, and not for any, and I'm not seeing, seeing it either, not for any personal designs or agendas. So I, kudos to this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to wish everybody a happy celebration, two hundred celebration this Saturday. I will hope and pray there's no rain for you all, so you can all have a good day and you don't have to reorganize and have it on Sunday, because I know sometimes it's harder to get people out there on Sundays than it is Saturdays. I will not be here for it. I do hope to watch it on, on cable access or on YouTube, hoping that they videotape the, the day's events. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor DePetro.
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steves.
I don't have anything either tonight, thanks. I don't have anything either tonight, thanks.
Great. Counselor Clements.
Just a couple of things, little housekeeping. So a few, meeting ago, two meetings ago, you had announced we, you had appointed a new auditor, correct? But it didn't come up for confirmation by us, by ratification by us. And according to our bylaw five dash one oh one, the town manager appoints subject to confirmation of council. So we should put it on the agenda and do that appropriately.
Next meeting, yeah, Karen, the subcommittee was made up of the town accountant, the collector, treasurer, and the assessor. They reviewed and did through a request for proposal process, it went through that. So you're correct. It's just a final stage, but it should be ratified by the council.
Right. I'm, I'm not saying it was wrong, or I'm not saying, you may not be aware, but in our charter, which is very important, you know, we need to pay attention in our bylaws, we need to pay attention to that. So I'm just asking that, and there are others who may know this, so certainly going forward, taking the advice of, of others, send something to subcommittee and then, and then up here. It's just, it's an oversight, and I'm sure the auditor will be fine, but I'd like to make sure we, we clean up. The only other thing that in reviewing the blight bylaw proposal and having some past experience, attend those meetings and talk about some of the issues that came up in terms of bylaws, for instance, what Director Pelletier was talking about, we have a provision in our bylaw for inconsistencies when we start a new bylaw, that there's a way that we can deal with inconsistencies on new bylaws and such. But in doing so, I was, again, reviewing a lot of different bylaws and the council rules and regs and a number of things. One of the, one of the things that came up to me is section six in our charter, in terms of bylaws and acting bylaws, there are four different segments there, and one of them talks about, because there was the consideration, do we need to read the bylaw three times again, even though we already did it twice? And I have no problem reading the, the bylaw three times again, as we said we would, because there were some substantial changes. However, our two dash six dash three specifically says every bylaw shall be read at three separate meetings before passage. That's what it says. And then in two six four, the affirmative vote of at least five members unless a greater number is prescribed by the general laws shall be necessary for the passage of the bylaw, taken by roll call. And I point that out because we've consistently, we put on, when we're doing a new bylaw, we consistently put it on our agenda as we need a vote. It's a, you know, three, we need the three readings, we're supposedly voting by a two-thirds vote, but the reality is, we need three readings, and the vote should come as a separate agenda item, if we read this correctly, that would then be vote to accept the bylaw as read, you know. So I guess going forward, I just, we do a lot of votes, a lot of roll calls. Council rules and regs say the only time we need a roll call is, is when it's certain requirements within our charter. So reality is, we can do hand votes for just about everything and save an awful lot of time and energy from our recording clerk. I've said that before, and I would suggest that again, that we take a look at that and potentially. I would suggest that again, that we take a look at that and potentially, I know for our openings, we raise, you know, we do hand votes, but there is no law, even in Roberts Rules of Order, and the open meeting laws say that you can take by voice vote or show of hand votes. So I guess it's just housekeeping and some clarification going forward, that it might just make the meetings a little easier, a little, you know, certainly if somebody wants their name to vote, I don't see why the recording clerk couldn't do that. So if we did a show of hands and somebody said, "I want it on record that I was, you know, the no," put it in. But it just seems like these roll call votes constantly, you know, it's just, it's redundant in that respect, unless we want to continue doing it. But according to our charter, our bylaws, it's not necessary. So the three meetings, the three readings, we can talk about this at a general government and see if, what we feel going forward, just, you know, this is what our charter says, I'm just pointing it out. Again, it was in review of the various components that we have for the community, and I just wanted to point it out, because it was pointed out, some of it was pointed out to me, which I then studied up on, and just a points of clarification for how we proceed here with our own system. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, Agenda item number 14, discussion of next meeting date.
It's going to be Monday, August 22nd, 7:00 p.m. in Council Chambers.
Okay. Agenda item number 15 should read adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor, simple hand vote. Motion carries. Good night.